At this time, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll and establish a court, please.
Mr. Blakemore.
Present.
Mr. Askew.
Here.
Chairman Whitfield.
Here.
Commissioner Hart.
Here.
Commissioner Stoltz.
Present.
Thank you all. At this time, board members, you do have an agenda that's been prepared and was published a week in advance, and at this time, we'll move for a motion to approve this agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
We have a motion by Commissioner Blakemore. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second. But Commissioner Stoltz, any further discussion on our agenda? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. The agenda is approved as presented. At this time, we have a public hearing that we're going to talk about and kind of lay out the scope of work of our joint comprehensive plan that we do with our cities. This is something that comes up every five years. Alex, come on up. He's our partner with the Northwest Georgia Regional Commission, and this is part of what he specializes in. So we're going to turn over the floor to you and let you give everyone an overview of the journey that we're about to take.
Okay. I appreciate it, Mr. Chairman, and thank you to the commissioners for allowing me to be here. As mentioned, we're beginning the comprehensive planning process for Walker County and the cities of Chickamauga, Lafayette, Lickout Mountain, and Rossville jointly. This is not the update portion. This will be a 10-year comprehensive plan with a five-year update coming up within the next five years. So where we are now is we're just beginning the process, and we wanted to have our first public hearing meeting to announce it. The comprehensive planning process came into being in the 1989 Georgia Planning Act, and it was established for the purposes of state saying, "We have an interest, an invested interest in the well-being of the local governments, and we want to best serve them." So they came up with a list of minimum standards and procedures, and part of that has to do with funding and to be a part of a qualified local government status, which you definitely want to maintain that status as there are financial benefits to it through grants and loans from, for example, community development block grants for redevelopment and revitalization, to GFA loans, Georgia Environmental Financing Authority, loans for infrastructural purposes such as sewer and water. Just going through the plan elements first, and then I'll come and give you the timetable. The plan itself is going to require six different elements. These elements being needs and opportunities. Now, I don't know if y'all picked up a sheet. These elements will be listed to the top of the sheet and to the left. Needs and opportunities, community work program, report of accomplishment, land use element, transportation element, broadband element. Of these six, the two important ones to really hit upon is the community work program and the land use element. The community work program is important part of the process as it'll list real projects that is foreseen in the future. So it's to meet your need, your future need, and the state likes to review those because they'd like to know where their investment's going to be going. And it's just to kind of give them an understanding of what will be needed in your community. Another reason it's important, I don't know if anybody knows, but there's the Appalachian Regional Commission, which is part of the federal government, and it does provide funding through grants and programs. And for any kind of grants or money presented, they want to see projects listed in your community work programs. So they are really focusing on having those listed as part of their process because they're covering the whole Appalachian region, and it makes you more competitive. So it's very, very important to go through that process. The land use element, the reason I want to mention it is part of the land use element requires a future development map, and the future development map's purpose is just to show any potential future development patterns. You know, you can't be perfect in predicting what the future will hold, but it kind of gives some kind of expectations. And by Georgia zoning law, that whenever zoning decisions are made in your local municipalities, the future development map should be referred to primarily just for the purpose of keeping some cohesiveness of what locals expect the future may look like and your zoning purposes. So it's just to provide information to the decision-makers in the process. There are optional elements that can be added to the plan. For example, an economic development element or other optional elements such as natural resources. So that covers all the elements. As for the process, this today, May 13th, is our first public hearing meeting. There's two meetings that are required. More can be made available if needed. And each element in the plan is going to be developed with public participation. So there's going to be a steering committee which is going to serve as a technical advisory, and that committee is going to meet as needed and best served. And meetings are open to the public, so I want to make that point known. We'll go through the whole process, and for us at Northwest Georgia Regional Commission, we're here to facilitate the process. We will be involved, but this is going to be driven by your input and driven by your municipalities, as y'all have the greatest invested interest. And we're also, we'll go through a process of making surveys available so that we can get input back also in that direction. Once we go through that process, by late November, early December, we should have a draft ready. By December, we'll have our next public hearing meeting in which we'll present the material to you, just demonstrating what our results have found and making that available for any discussion as needed. Then, from that point on, the local governments will prepare our transmittal letter, and we'll send it, the draft, to the regional commissions, at which time, we will review the paperwork to make sure it's in compliance with the planning rules. Once we go through that process, it'll be sent to the Department of Community Affairs, probably first to middle of January, probably the first of January of 2022, and they'll go through their process to make sure it's in compliance with planning rules. Once they're satisfied, the next portion will be the adoption resolution, which will be executed by the local governments, and then the plan will be published February 28, 2022. So, you know, I just wanted to make people aware of not only beginning the process, but as for Northwest Georgia Regional Commission, we look forward to this opportunity to work with y'all, and we appreciate you. So, thank you.
Okay. Does any of the board members have any questions?
No, sir.
Anyone in the audience have any questions on this? Yes, sir.
What would actually be the job of the steering committee?
So the steering committee is going to be made up of representatives that have invested the interest in the community. So these will be your officials. These may be people from Public Works. These may be fire chiefs, police chiefs, other utilities. And these individuals' purpose is, since they live in your community, they have an understanding and a reflection of what is going to be needed. So we need them to inform us on how to best go forth through the project. And they're representing you. That is the important principle. They are here to represent you to the best of ability. And so, yes, they're here as a representative of your community and your needs.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate you coming and being with us, and I look forward to working with you and your team. Appreciate the support the regional commission gives to our county.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Okay. At this time, that will close out our public hearing. Before you, board members, we do have the copy of our minutes from our last regular scheduled meeting, which was April the 22nd, 2021. Do we have a motion to approve these minutes from our last meeting?
Motion to approve.
Okay. We have a motion by Commissioner Stoltz. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second by Commissioner Blakemore. Any further discussion on these minutes? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries to approve these minutes as presented. Okay. At this time, we will open up the floor for anyone that would like to be recognized to come up and make any public comments to the board and staff. We do ask you to limit your comments to five minutes. We do have a clock that we will start, so you can have a reference point of your time. So is there anyone here tonight that would like to make any public comments?
I'm going to wait until I have to. I'm going to call the Parks Department tomorrow. It was about, we, the jail up on the mountain.
Okay.
That's what I want to talk about. I was informed by the call, the Parks Department talking first, see if they could do anything about it before we break into the county.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else?
Just one quick question. I was wondering, when you start the new business, as far as the resolution on the stakeholders, will you be able to ask questions at that time, or should I ask them now?
You need to come up and ask them now, please.
Okay. Name's Gary Williams. I was wondering, is there a criteria to be on the steering committee?
Well, as he stated, it's just people that's involved in our local government and also citizens. But most importantly, all citizens of the community will be able to participate, have input, attend the meetings, will have open time for just general discussions. So we are required by the program to list people as our stakeholder representatives, but actually, everyone in the county is a stakeholder. So everyone will be able to participate.
So I guess as far as the folks that's listed as the stakeholders, are they represented for each district? In other words, did other commissioners get to have an input as far as who these stakeholders would be?
There has been some discussion and input on these, and there is actually one that did not make this. We've got to add before we take this up. But yes, there was input made on these, and then the board will discuss this and take this action up here in just a moment.
Now, these stakeholders, is this really just for the Walker County unincorporated? Will not the cities have representatives from each city?
Yeah, that's a great question. The cities also will be compiling a list and approving stakeholders as well that will represent each and every city that's participating.
I was just wondering, you know, is there each district, as far as in the unincorporated areas, are they representative on the stakeholder folks that you're going to be voting on or making a resolution on here?
There is a good many of these people that's on this list are staff members because there's going to be quite a bit of work done during the week at the office, and so we'd be able to bring information and again, allow everybody to participate.
I was just thinking that it would be nice if the stakeholders, you know, would be more from, you know, maybe the unincorporated. But if everybody's going to be able to participate, so these folks will not just actually, they won't be voting on this. Everybody in the whole community will be able to make the decisions.
They'll have input, and then at the end, the board here will vote on the final document.
So I guess there again, what exactly, as far as the stakeholders, what would be their position?
Their position is to participate, listen to people that are presenting ideas and information, to research information, to collaborate, to collaborate with the city stakeholders. So it's just more of a, a lot of it's going to be a communication and research role.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else that would like to speak?
Okay. Hearing none, we'll move forward to our next item on our agenda. We'd like to welcome Wade Hutchison. He's our county extension agent with UGA. We've asked him to come and speak with us. We've added this in our agenda every meeting that we possibly can to allow different parts of our local government to come and talk about what they do and how they serve the community. So Wade, appreciate you being here.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's a pleasure to be here. Good evening. Good evening to the members of the board. We're pleased to join you. Joining me tonight is my colleague, Casey Hobbs, who is our 4H agent. She'll address you in just a moment. Our other staff members are Jennifer Meeks, our administrative assistant, Kelly Wilson serves as 4H program assistant, and Rebecca Hamilton is our nutrition education program assistant. We are UGA Extension in Walker County, and we are proud to serve the citizens of Walker County. UGA Extension is a statewide public service and outreach agency funded by federal, state, and local governments. We bring research-based information and education directly to individuals, families, and communities. We translate science of everyday living for farmers, families, and communities to foster a healthy and prosperous Georgia. We're collaborative between Georgia county governments, the USDA, and UGA colleges of agricultural and environmental and environmental sciences, along with the family and consumer sciences. UGA Extension is dedicated to helping people find answers to questions related to agriculture, horticulture, the hemlock woolly adilja, youth, and families. For over 100 years, UGA Extension has provided free, reliable, unbiased, research-based information. We deliver information via programs and workshops, field days, newsletters, through mass media, standard, old reliable phone calls and in-person consultations, either in office or on-site. We offer numerous print and online publications on practically every topic within the areas of agriculture, families, 4H, and youth development. A quick brief on what we do as a team through those three program areas. I, as extension coordinator, provide administrative leadership for our team and provide outreach in agriculture and natural resources. My program focuses on production agriculture. Agriculture in Walker County has a $72 million farm gate value, which is the total value of commodity crops grown in Walker County. Myself and county agents around the state do a farm gate value report every year to arrive at that number. Our major commodities are poultry, followed by other livestock, which is largely beef, but also includes horses, goats, and sheep. And the third in the top three is row crops. But there are numerous other crops produced in this county, such as vegetables, fruits, timber, Christmas trees. I provide assistance and programming also in home gardening, which is lawns and landscapes, pest management, practically anything that can be grown, whether it's within a landscape or backyard garden, or maybe out in the recreational fish pond that someone owns, or even something that's bothering people, such as the hemlock woolly adilja that I hope to help solve. And that assistance is provided through onsite consultations, in-person, in the office, field days, classes, offices, its email. Recently, I and surrounding county agents held the Northwest Georgia Forage Field Day, where we presented information, current research, to expand a forage grower's ability to improve their pastures and hayfields. We also offer various testing services, the most common being soil and water testing. And I've already mentioned our publications, which are available both hard copy in-office or access to every one of them through any computer via online. Our next program area is 4H and youth development, and I'll ask my colleague, Casey Hobbs, to come and share a little bit about 4H.
Thank you, Mr. Wade. Like you said, that 4H is a part of extension, and I know a lot of people in the citizens don't really relate that, but we do work under extension. I've been honored to serve as the Walker County 4H extension agent for the last 15 years, and alongside me is my program assistant, and we do all the programming for youth of Walker County. 4H is a major outreach program of the University of Georgia Extension, and we work in cooperation with the public school system, UGA, and partners of the county government as well, to provide positive learning experiences for all the youth. Our goal is to bring the knowledge and research from the university to the youth citizens of the county. I always say that we are kind of the bridge between the formal learning environment of school and the informal learning environment that we see in sports. We kind of bridge that gap with kids, as our mission is to assist these kids in acquiring knowledge, developing life skills, and forming attitudes that will enable them to become self-directed, productive, and contributing citizens as adults. We believe in the four essential elements of youth development, and we ensure that all of our programs embody those four, and those include making sure kids have the opportunity for mastery, belonging, independence, and generosity. We program in a variety of different areas, and we base this on the issues that are here in Walker County's youth. These are most commonly in agriculture, citizenship, communication, environment, family and consumer sciences, and leadership. We conduct club meetings for students, offer competitive team events, individual excellence contests, as well as camping and conferences. Our focus is mostly on 5th through 12th grades, but we also extend some of our programming for first through fourth. All youth may participate, whether they are in public, private, or even homeschool. When I started 15 years ago, we had about 500 youth. This year, we have 1,345 members of our program that we meet on a monthly basis in club meetings, and then those children are able to participate in the activities after school that they want to participate in. Our youth get to participate free in almost every activity. We try to do as low cost as we possibly can on things like camp, thanks to our donations, our grants, and our United Way funding. And so I'm pleased to kind of be a part of extension and to bring all of this information to the youth citizens of our county.
Along with Ag Natural Resources, 4H Youth Development, our third program area is families and consumer sciences. And in 2019, through federal grant funds, we added Rebecca Hamilton to our staff as FNEP program assistant. FNEP is the Expanded Food and Nutrition Education Program, which offers programs on healthy eating, as well as the importance of regular physical activity, in effort to improve knowledge on how nutrition and physical activity can improve health, empowering participants with the knowledge of living a healthy lifestyle to prevent disease and promote wellness. FNEP programs nurture good health for our community. The program is offered both in-person and virtually, and provides guidance on portion size, nutrition label reading, cooking demonstration for selecting and preparing nutrient-dense foods, and physical activity guidelines for a healthy weight goal. It helps with meal planning, food selection, food safety, and maintaining a grocery budget. FNEP classes can be held in partnership with the following, but certainly not limited to 9th through 12th grade classrooms, communities and schools, health department, parenting classes, public housing authorities, community centers and libraries, faith-based organizations, food pantries, recreational centers, and I would add that Ag Natural Resources can fit right in there with that as well. One of the goals that I have is to add that third leg to our extension stool, county agent stool, and us, Walker County, to have a family and consumer science county agent. Our office is just behind us at 102 Napier Street. Our programs are planned there, but our space limits the classroom, our ability to deliver classroom activities there in the office. So we spread ourselves throughout the county and are often at the Ag Center in Rock Spring. We are excited to have been included as one of the SLOSS projects and look forward to fulfilling the Ag Center project and increasing our ability to serve our citizens. That is our goal, to serve the citizens of Walker County how, when, and where they need us, whether it's agriculture, youth, or families, as they all touch us every day. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any board member have any questions for the team? Very good. You covered a lot. Now, it sounds like you've got an army of about 100 people, but I know you have a very, very small staff, and y'all do a tremendous amount of good in the community, and I want to publicly thank y'all for all that you do. You've been just a pleasure to work with, and y'all just do a lot for our youth and for our farmers, and thank you very much for all that you do.
We're happy to do that. Thank you, sir.
Thank y'all very much.
Appreciate you. Thank you.
Very good. Very good. Very informative. Okay. Under our new business, we do have a resolution, R 1721. As I called here before we got started, there is one name missing that one of our commissioners did submit. So under that last name, we need to add the name John Conley. Y'all write in John Conley. Okay, and I'll read this here. Resolution R 17-21, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Walker County to appoint members of the 2021 Joint Comprehensive Plan Stakeholders Committee. Whereas the Board of Commissioners of Walker County Board is the governing authority of Walker County, Georgia, and whereas one of the duties delegated to the chairman of the board is to appoint members to all the committees of the board with the approval of the board. And whereas Georgia law requires local government update the joint comprehensive plan every five years in order to maintain qualified local government status, allowing continued eligibility for state loans, grants, and permits. Whereas Chairman Whitfield submitted the following appointments to serve as representatives of the Walker County on the 2021 Comprehensive Plan Committee. Commissioner Robert Stoltz, Robert Woodlaw, Shannon Whitfield, Joe Leggie, Elliot Pierce, Tyrone Davis, DeKai Porter, Stacy Settles, John Conley. Whereas these individuals has expressed a willingness to serve the people of Walker County in such capacities until such time as a new joint comprehensive plan is adopted. Therefore, it being resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Walker County, Georgia, that the appointments listed above are approved, so resolved and adopted the 13th day of May 2021. So this being an appointment of the chairman, I'll submit this as my recommendation to the board as a motion, and ask if there is a second to support this motion to appoint these hard-working folks to this comprehensive plan committee.
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Hart. Is any further discussion of the board? All right. Hearing none of the board. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, we'll sign this resolution. Okay. Next item we have is Resolution R 18-21, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Walker County to declare property of the Walker County Sheriff's Office unserviceable surplus and removed from the county inventory. Whereas OCGA 369-2 provides that the county governing authority shall have the governing authority shall have the control of all property belonging to the county and may by order enter on its minutes, direct the disposal of all real property which may lawfully be disposed of and make and execute good and significant title thereof on behalf of the county. Whereas the sheriff has requested the property listed on Exhibit A and Exhibit B be deemed unservable surplus, further request that the property be removed from the county inventory, therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Walker County, Georgia, that the property listed Exhibit A and Exhibit B here attached hereto and made part hereof by be hereby declared unservable surplus and removed from the county inventory, so resolved and adopted the 13th day of May 2021. And we'll see Exhibit A is mostly a computer or technology-related equipment. Exhibit B is actually a copy of the email of a vehicle that's out of service due to motor and transmission needs that the sheriff has requested. Is there any question or discussion of the board on this resolution? Hearing none, do we have a motion to accept this resolution as presented?
I'll make a motion. We accept the resolution as presented.
We have a motion by Commissioner. Ask you, do we have a second for this motion?
I'll second.
We have a second by Commissioner Blake Moore. Any further discussion of the board? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the resolution is approved as presented. Okay, the next item we have is an intergovernmental agreement between Walker County Government and Chautauqua County Government to convey property for the purpose of mutual aid. This intergovernmental agreement is made and entered into by and between Walker County, Georgia, Walker County, and Chautauqua County, Georgia. Whereas Walker County is the owner of one 2010 Chevy Tahoe PB, PPV, which is Police Pursuit Vehicle, and the VIN number, last five digits being 209351. Motor vehicle is noted here as vehicle. The vehicle is declared unservable and surplus by Walker County. And whereas Chautauqua County has informed Walker County that the Chautauqua County Sheriff's Department, Sheriff's Department is in indeed need of an additional motor vehicle for law enforcement purposes, and whereas Chautauqua County could use the vehicle either by repairing it or using it for parts. And whereas Walker County Sheriff's Department and Chautauqua County Sheriff's Department provide mutual law enforcement aid, and whereas conveyance of this vehicle for Walker County to Chautauqua County with further Chautauqua County Sheriff's Department ability to provide mutual aid to Walker County Sheriff's Department. And whereas this agreement was presented and approved at the meeting of the governing authority of both Walker County and Chautauqua County, now therefore incorporated the foregoing recital in consideration of the mutual promise conveyed and undertaking of the parties set forth here within and for the public purpose set forth here within. The parties convey and agree and bind themselves as the following. Number one, transfer of ownership of the vehicle, Walker County grants and conveys to Chautauqua County legal title and ownership of the vehicle. Number two, no liability for Walker County. The parties agree that Walker County shall not in any event be liable for any personal injury, loss of life, or damage to any property arising from directly or indirectly possession, use, maintenance, or operation of the vehicle or any of its parts by Chautauqua County, Chautauqua County Sheriff's Department, or any of its agents, employees, representatives, or any third parties. Number three, disclaimer of warranties. It is understood and agreed that Walker County deliver the vehicle to Chautauqua County in as-is condition with all faults and whatever condition it may be without any agreement, warranty, or representation expressed or implied as to the matter whatsoever representing vehicle. Without limiting the generalality of the foregoing, Walker County expressly declares any implied warranty or merchantability, fitness, or adequacy for any particular purpose or use, quality, or maintenance. Number four, inner agreement. This agreement contain the entire understanding of the parties with respect to the subject matter hereof, and no representations, investments, promises, or agreements, oral or otherwise, between the parties not embodied here within shall be, or any force or effort. It is witness hereof, Walker County, Chautauqua County have caused this agreement to be executed by their duly authorized officials. There's a place for Chautauqua County, so Commissioners assign it for Walker County once the board takes action on this. A little background on this. Chautauqua County has a 2010 Chevy Tahoe police package vehicle that was involved in an auto accident in a high-speed chase. That was their K-9 vehicle. And Chautauqua County is in desperate need to be able to repair that vehicle, the body damage that was done to that vehicle. So our sheriffs of our two counties have collaborated, and they feel like that this is a good opportunity for our county to help our neighboring county by conveying this vehicle to them so they can get their K-9 vehicle back in service by using the body parts off of this vehicle and the capacity to refurbish their vehicle, because they're not in the financial position to purchase a vehicle. So is there any questions of the board of this? And this is a recommendation that's been brought to us by our sheriff. Any questions? Okay, hearing none, do we have a motion to approve this intergovernmental agreement?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Blake Moore. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Stoltz. Any further discussion of the board? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, we will sign this as approved as presented. Thank you for that. I know they will be very grateful to receive that vehicle. Okay, next item, we have a purchase order 2021-1269 for 20 AED devices from, what's that, Stiller or Skyler? Striker Medical for Walker County Fire Rescue totaling $33,180.20. We plan on funding this through our American Rescues Fund. This time, we would like our Representative Assistant Chief, Mr. Pharoah, to come up and give us a little background and overview about the AEDs and the department and the need to make an upgrade.
Mr. Chairman, thank you, members of the board. I'm Deputy Chief Nathan Pharoah with Walker County Fire. We're asking to purchase these 20 LifePak CR2 defibrillators. They're $1,759.01 each, for the total of $33,180. These units will come with an eight-year warranty on the unit itself, a four-year unit battery warranty. These actually have Wi-Fi capabilities and a host of other upgrades from our current AEDs. To give you a background, the current AED inventory in Walker County is now 16 years old. 10 of those are under a recall at this point that's not covered by warranty. And we have AEDs from various manufacturers. Due to the unknown cost of those AEDs and the associated costs, we're asking that we purchase these 20 new AEDs. We have 17 on hand right now. 15 of those are in rotation in the county. Two of those are in fixed locations. Given us 20, we'll obviously upgrade our capabilities into putting those into command vehicles and a couple other vehicles that will be throughout the county. One of the things this purchase will do, it will streamline our AEDs into the same unit across the county and bring our capabilities up to modern-day specs. Obviously, 16 years old in technology is a long time if you think about cell phones, computers, what they've done in the last 16 years. So something as important as an AED. For those of you who don't know what an AED is, it's an electronic device that detects a heart rate for sudden cardiac arrest and tells you if that's a shockable rhythm. And we use those quite a bit in the county. Like I said, this will allow us to place more units in service throughout the county, and we would appreciate the approval if granted.
Very good summary. You did really good on that. I appreciate that. I learned a couple of things there myself. Chief Hodge and I had reviewed this back about a week or so, and when he brought to my attention the condition of these AEDs, I said, we got to get on this right away. And I know our board members are very supportive of our public safety, and we want to make sure we're providing good care for our citizens and be able to have your team with the proper equipment in the field, on the, on-site, when needed. So is there any questions of the board to Mr. Pharoah?
Chief Pharoah, where are the AEDs at the fixed locations? Where are those located?
The 911 Center and the Civic Center is what I've read, just from the update in our inventory, we have them there. So is there any at the courthouse, or any in your office?
We have additional AEDs that we've bought with some other grant money. How many have we distributed in?
We just bought 10. Last year, I believe we bought six or eight with our grant money.
So we've got about 16 or 18 in different county buildings.
Yeah, and those are separate from our, we keep the, you know, our fire department keeps our inventory of ours, and we have 17 that obviously are very well-aged at this point.
All right. So any further questions of the board? Hearing none, do we have a motion to approve the purchase order for the 20 AEDs at $33,180.20?
Motion to approve.
Do we have a motion by Commissioner Stoltz? Do we have a second?
Second.
A second by Commissioner Hart. Any further discussion of the board? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, we'll approve this purchase order.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, our next item was a purchase order that was pending. We put it on the list because this is something we were trying to get accomplished. We've been made aware that there's going to be a significant price increase of fire hydrants forthcoming as early as July 1st. Vendors are talking anywhere between the 20% to 40% range of price increase, and we did not quite get everything together today for this meeting. So it's my recommendation that we have a motion from the board to table this action item, and we will have this information and a recommendation to the board to purchase some fire hydrants at our next meeting. So we have a motion to approve to table this action item.
Yes, motion to approve to table.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Hart. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Have a second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you for that. Okay, the next item that we have on our agenda is our statistical report that we put out the first meeting of every month, starting with our animal shelter. They had an intake of 115 dogs and 77 cats. There was 125 dogs that were either adopted, rescued, or returned, 52 cats. And then unfortunately, we did have to euthanize two dogs in April. Co-compliance, there was 2,193 reviews that showed to be in compliance. There was 48 citations wrote overall for the month, with 14 cases closed out, which is fantastic. That means there's 14 properties that are in compliance in our county. And fire department call for services, 241 calls for service handled by 489 vehicles or units that responded. We had a good month on installing smoke alarms. We were coming off kind of a weak month in March with 10, but we had 30 in April, and I think probably some of that could be contributed. There was some really nice banners put up at some of our schools around the county to bring awareness to this. And so, we're very, very happy that we have 92 smoke alarms installed in residential homes this year, and I'm sure over the next year or two, those will prove to save some lives. Roadside litter, 11,060 pounds of trash picked up. Mountain Cove Farms was very active with 121 nights stayed at our cabins. Single-family home construction was 12 for the month, puts us at 49 for the year. Our media impressions were down some, I guess with the settling out of COVID. Things are not as happening in the media at the moment, so we had 25 stories that we were able to track. We did add 70 new followers to Facebook. I think a lot of that has contributed to being able to air these meetings live on our Facebook, and so we appreciate all of our Facebook watchers and followers out there. Our county website received 43,149 visits. We did add 315 subscribers to our e-newsletter. A lot of that was people were asked when they got their COVID shot if they wanted to be added to the monthly newsletter. So that just about got us up to our number last year. We've had 992 added to that free e-newsletter each month. As we continue to work and pave roads, we still have a lot of roads that we have to continue to do repair and potholes, and that will unfortunately continue as we work through our paving list. But 810 potholes patched, and our transit service is back in full swing. Our senior citizen centers are opening in some capacities, and so our seniors are traveling a lot more through our transit, 1,364 trips on our transit. So very good numbers this month. So at this time, as we come to our meeting, we'll ask our district commissioners if there's anything that they would like to share publicly and bring awareness to that's happening in their district or in the community. So we'll start off with our District One Commissioner Buckmore.
I'd just like to, appreciate everybody coming out. Thank y'all for your support and been involved in your government. We did have a cake auction last week on the Operation Rossville Playground, and we raised, I can't remember the number, it was a little over $2,000, so we're up to about $10,000 toward the playground. So we're moving in positive. I talked to Charlie Stevens today. We're looking at a date, and June to have a rec All-Star Tournament in Rossville to benefit the playground. So just look out for that. And like the Facebook page, Operation Rossville Playground, to keep up what we're doing, trying to get that done. And that's it.
Very good. District Two.
Well, I'd like to thank everybody again for participating. As we move into the spring and summertime, we're looking at graduations. A lot, most of our schools are either graduated or getting ready to, and so summer activities are going to pick up. I want to encourage everybody to get out and enjoy those. I've been looking and trying to determine maybe a date or some dates to look at maybe having a little community meeting for District Two. And as busy as everyone is on our 24-hour society, you know, seven days a week, I kind of got to thinking, and so I want to throw this out to everyone out there that rather than to try to set a date, I'd like to, I'd like to put it out for groups, whether it be a civic organization, scout group, or a neighborhood group, to notify me and contact, and I'll come out and visit with you on your site, in other words. So I want to have more interaction in the district, but picking a date that people can participate in time seems to be kind of hard. I'm having a trouble fitting it on a calendar. So I'd like to encourage anybody, District Two or any, or in the county period, that if they would like to sit down and discuss ideas or comments, to reach out to any of us district guys as well, and invite us to gatherings or situations where we can come and offer some information. So that being said, thank you for your participation, and enjoy.
Very good. District Three, Commissioner Hart?
Yes, a couple neat things happening in the Fett area this weekend in District Three. Number one, Saturday night in LaFett, on the square, they're having Hometown Music Night. It's a free event, starts at 5:00. There'll be a future band at 9:00. So I encourage, you know, families to get out there. COVID's kind of lifting, be a good opportunity to get the kids out at no charge. Mark mentioned graduation's coming up. I talked to our local high school in District Three a couple days ago, talked to the principal there, and they are, the graduation rate at LaFett this year was 90.53%. So a shout-out to her and the staff of LaFett High School, great job there. And last thing I want to mention, Chuck Clements and his group are doing the Vietnam Veterans Alliance, is having Armed Forces Day Luncheon this Saturday on Homer Cagle Road. You may have seen the flyers around LaFett. So if you know a veteran in the area, any part of Walker County or outside of Walker County, they're more than welcome to come to that. It starts at 11:00. It's a great event. Chuck's putting it on every year, and it's a, it's a good time to get out there and get our veterans recognized. If you're a veteran, please come to that. Thank you.
District Four, Mr. Stoltz.
Thank you, sir. So I want to thank everyone for coming tonight. Just want to mention a few things. There is a Walker County rabies clinic. It's going to be this Saturday. It's $15 cash per pet, cat, or dog. The first session is going to be at Gordon Lee High from 1:00 to 2:00. The second one is at Nellie Elementary from 3:00 to 4:00. And the last one of the day is at Rock Spring Elementary from 4:30 to 5:30. And I had my pets vaccinated last year in the valley, and it's quick, 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 great service, so I would recommend it. Get your pets' rabies vaccinated. The second thing is, this is National Police Officer Week, so I want to say thank you to all of our local agencies, our Sheriff's Department, and our State Patrol. I want to I want to thank them for their dedicated service and protecting our communities. So if you see any of our law enforcement out and about, take a moment to tell them thank you for the service that they're providing. And last, I want to do a shout out to the Walker County Farmers Market. It's every Saturday. Is that correct, Karen? Every Saturday. It's in Rock Spring. And you can find them on Facebook. So let's get out and support our local farmers. It's 8 to 12 on Saturday. Is that correct? Okay, so thank you very much.
Okay, very good. I appreciate you bringing up the Rabies Clinic. And that is something very important to our community. We did have our first positive rabies case in Walker County that was a wild animal. It's the first case we've had, I believe, the report was since 2014. So we want to make everyone aware of that and how important it is to have your animals vaccinated for rabies. $15 is an absolute bargain. It's a drive-through service. As Commissioner Stoltz mentioned, it's very fast. They'll provide you the documentation and also the tag to go on their collar. And so it's partnering with our local veterinarians, with our Ag Extension Office. I'm surprised our friends from our Ag Extension Office didn't mention that while they were here.